Good morning. Kansas State Board of Education is called to order. I want to welcome those people who are in the audience and those that are listening through our YouTube channel. I noticed, please note that all board members are present. We will have two additions to the agenda. First of all, a resolution that will be considered for adoption during the chair's report. And then an executive session for personnel matters. It will be the last thing before adjournment. But those two additions are, a motion will be in order to approve the agenda as amended, and that would be by Deanna Horst and seconded by Melanie. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We are excited today to have Senator Mount Gardner with us. And there are a couple of things, and it'll be seamless. You can just go from one to the other. And we thank you for coming, and we look forward to hearing to you, and we look forward to continuing positive relationships.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the State Board of Education for allowing me to blow in from Miami County. I just wanted to touch base. So this is my second opportunity to be with you physically here. We did meet, oh, two months ago, and I just wanted to have kind of a follow-up on a few items. So the first thing that I wanted to talk about was what I would like to extend to members of the State Board of Education is that we do, go ahead and set up times that you can meet with legislators across the Capitol, across the street at the Capitol when we are in session. And so what I was thinking of, and I have talked with Chair Porter about this, is that my office will reserve a space, and right now we're thinking of the vault, which is just on the first floor before you get to the rotunda area. But reserve that space and try and coordinate two days per month. So that would be in January, February, March. We are on break in April, and then we will be back. May is a little dicey because it's veto session, and sometimes that's been a few days, and other times it's been almost a month. So that's a little questionable, but my thought was that we could try and coordinate the Wednesday that you are here as being one of those days, and then pick another date in the month that we could make that happen. That being said, what we would do from my office is we would make sure that all Senate members and all House members knew that this was occurring, that legislators didn't have to be serving on an education committee to participate, to listen, and to participate in that communication process. But that we would be particularly careful that we don't violate any coma regulations. So we would be very strict with regard to who is serving on House and Senate education committees, so there wouldn't be a violation of that. My thought was that we would make sure that we were working to stay on task. And, you know, one of the things that you had extended was, could there be one topic, one specific topic that impacts K through 12 that both groups could be working on very specifically? And I like that idea because it's all about that focus attitude and effort. So if we really zero in on that. And quite frankly, thanks to Board Member Horst. When we had the interim education committee meeting two weeks ago, we did come upon a topic, and that was to focus on that every third grader in our Kansas schools would be at grade level of reading before they left third grade. And there were a lot of reasons for that. Personally, I hearken back to my education training courses, and third grade is such a pivotal age and grade for all kids, for all kids. And what we do know from all kinds of research is that a child that cannot read at third grade level by the time they leave third grade is very unlikely to be successful as they move forward. So we did feel that that would be something that the legislature, the State Board of Education, and then the trickle-down of all of our different school districts, that if everyone understood that that was going to be a true statewide focus. Of course, we have lots of other education foci, but we want to make sure that every parent, every teacher, everyone knows in the community that our focus is making sure universally that that third grader can read at third grade level. I did want to share a little bit of progress from the last time that we met together here. There was discussion about community college service areas, and the nineteen community college presidents did write, draft a letter that they did send to the State Board of Regents last month. So there is a letter out there on that. I anticipate, I know the State Board of Regents has said, at least their chair has said, we are going to postpone any future discussion for a year on this. So I don't see that off the table. I see it really shifted to the side of the table. So that is an area that we can continue to discuss, but if you haven't seen that letter, that might be helpful. It certainly did galvanize the nineteen community college presidents, and also they had their discussions with their elected board members. And so more and more people are becoming a little bit familiar with it, so we can continue that ongoing discussion. Also, when there was the joint education interim meeting two weeks ago, there was some questioning and some discussion about action that you as a state board had taken with regard to accreditation. And there really seems to be a mixed understanding of your action. So it was my request as we were ending the meeting. I requested that the revisers and the legislative research work together along with the Department of Education to develop what we would refer to as like a white paper. So anytime we are going to have floor discussion on a bill that came out of committee in the House and in the Senate, research as well as revisers put together a white paper that is a summary of that bill. So that folks that didn't participate in the hearings, they have a copy of the bill, but they also have the explainer. It also shares who came and testified and so forth. So I thought really before we can move forward in, from a legislative standpoint, in discussing with you that accreditation and your process, because you have implemented change. We kind of needed a common page, and I thought the white paper might serve as that. So one of the first things I think that we could talk about at that very first meeting is hopefully we'll have a draft of the white paper. And if there are changes that need to be made from the State Board of Education standpoint, we can make that. And then hopefully that will get legislators more on the page of what it is as far as your intent. Now, I have received a request that I want to share with you. I've actually received it not only from within Johnson County, but from within my Senate district, and also I've heard from some folks in South Central Kansas. And this is a specific request of them for me to share with you. They are wanting to know what is the position of the Kansas Board of Education regarding the student-parent relationship? And information that a teacher or teachers may have that may impact the future of the student. School districts are, and teachers in particular, are kind of struggling with this issue, and it has many layers. It might be how a child is doing academically. It might be how a child is doing behaviorally. It might have to do with something that a child might have shared with a teacher. And there is concern about, you know, when I think of education, when I think of what's going on in the state of Kansas as far as particularly K through 12 education, I always think of it as a triangle. And I think of the student at the top, and I think of as that base or foundation being, one corner being the teachers and the school and the school district, and on the other corner being the parent. Because the parent and the school have to serve as that foundation for the child. But what I am hearing from folks, and this is from teachers as well as middle administrators and parents. Is there's a different triangle, and it's causing triangulation, and that is administrators, teachers, parent. And some teachers feel like they have been told by administrators, okay, this is not to be shared with parent. And then there are parents that are saying, okay, there's this information, and it's not being shared with me. So it would be very helpful if you can, and you may have a policy on that already written out. But if you could get that to me, I think it would be helpful to be able to share with school districts and with parents. Because I think we always want to have that, you know, keep legislation absolutely out of it. This has nothing to do with legislation. This simply has to do with what is happening in our schools and what isn't happening in our schools. And I don't ever want a teacher to feel as if they might lose their job if they shared something about a student to their parent. Likewise, I don't want administrators to feel like they have to be the referee of what will and will not be shared with parents. I think of a time when I was teaching and coaching at Lewisburg, and a student, I asked to hold, I asked to stay back after class because something was wrong. Something was not, the child was not the same. And he, as a young teen, admitted to me, well, the problem is I'm really hooked into drugs, and I don't know how to get out of it. Well, that was so much bigger than me. And I said, okay, who do you trust that we can go talk to? So we talked to the assistant principal, who had been a counselor. And then we opened the circle, and the next call was to the parent, and then the next call was to county that could provide this child services. But you see how it was all linked? Child, teacher, teacher, administrator, that the child addressed that they could trust, then parent, then outside resources. So I hope that we can have that continuum. But if you have, Commissioner, if you're familiar with a particular policy or statement to that, I think we need to have that. Now I would like to, I guess I'm gonna stop. Do you have any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Whenever you talked about, we had an extensive discussion yesterday about parental engagement, which of course is different from commi-
It's different, but timely.
From communication.
Yeah.
You know, communication is me telling you what's happening. Engagement is that we work together.
Right.
So whenever you talk about that issue, you need to be assured that you're preaching to the choir.
I couldn't be happier that that's what you talked about yesterday.
Because we talked about it yesterday. We talked about that. I had a, I'm, I'm, I met, I had a conversation this morning with a parent where that's not happening. So I know that the concerns are real. I know that our emphasis is, is parental engagement, real parental engagement and real cooperation to make decisions and information about kids. So now we have to figure out a better way, because it's not happening everywhere. I'm hoping that the event that I heard this morning and the events you're hearing are the exception. I fear they're not. But, but this is another area where we can cooperate and emphasize that that engagement piece is absolutely critical to the success of a child.
It is. And if you guys have codified a statement, or again, if you have a policy for that, if legislators can also have that and share in newsletters and in communication. I mean, that's one of the ways that we help continue to communicate. So I look forward to us continuing to have that discussion. And like I said, I could not be happier that you discussed that yesterday. I am going to transition to another topic that indirectly impacts you. And that has to do with the Kansas Promise Scholarship. And the reason I want to share this information with you is because it really is an instrument, a tool, if you will, that I think it is going to even further strengthen what we're already doing in our high schools with what we like to refer to as SB 155. But it is that career and technology, the CTE programs, because not all kids can complete a certificate program in their high school. But one of the things that the Kansas Promise Act does is it really dovetails exactly with what they might have earned in the high school and that they can continue on. The Kansas Promise Act was something that the Senate and the House passed two years ago. It got vetoed by the governor. But I'm not one to say it's over yet. So I reintroduced it last year, and we did get that through, and it was passed almost unanimously in both the House and the Senate. The Kansas Promise Scholarship is a scholarship that for the first time is taking state funds and directing it to community colleges for scholarships. That's never been available ever in the state of Kansas until we pass this. What we budgeted was $10 million for this year and $10 million for next year. The other thing that it does is something that we've struggled in the state to provide in higher education, and that is scholarship opportunities for those kids that I would refer to as being right there in the middle. So they don't qualify for Pell, or they only partially qualify. Or they only partially qualify for Pell. So, if they only partially or don't qualify. And they're just that bump above that, then they're eligible for the Promise Scholarship. It also addresses what many times our kids don't have an opportunity for. Is those high achievement students. They get those scholarships and there's nothing for those kids that are the A minus, B plus, B, B minus, C plus, C, and C minus kids. It really helps those kids to say, guess what? You know, we believe in you and we're gonna help you. And what the Promise Scholarship does is, I always believe a carrot. We need a carrot and then we need a stick. And so, the carrot of this is the first step to being, to determine if you're eligible, is you have to fill out the FAFSA. Now, FAFSA participation has been pretty low in the state of Kansas. I think we were, two years ago, we were ranked thirty-fifth out of states as far as completing FAFSA. FAFSA is a complicated process, particularly for school districts that have kids. That are low socioeconomic kids because they're not necessarily gonna have a driver's license. If I don't have a car to drive, I'm not getting a driver's license. It also is very cumbersome, particularly for a child who would be a first-generation college student. Because the parents really don't know where to start. FAFSA is a lengthy process. They say to take, to plan on thirty to forty-five minutes to complete. We are really looking forward to the short process. That the US Department of Education says is coming out in a couple of years, that will be helpful. But the carrot is you fill out FAFSA first. And that's how we determine if, if they're eligible from a funding standpoint. From what their family income is. And we set it as for a family of two. It can't exceed annual income of a hundred thousand or more. And we actually used the parameters based on what other states are using for their similar type programs. So, to show you how this carrot is working. Each of the community colleges have had students that have come in because they heard about this scholarship. Where it was gonna pay for tuition, books, all equipment, all its supplies to earn the certificate or the degree. And most of them brag on KCK. They were so excited, they were pretty certain we're gonna have the first Promise Scholar. This was a thirty-something gentleman that came in, heard about it. Filled out FAFSA. And found out he was one hundred percent Pell eligible. Now, KCK was disappointed because they didn't have their first Promise Scholar. But it was a win. It's a win for Kansas because he was eligible for different funding and had no idea. So, without Kansas' promise, he would have never ventured into that. What we did is we set aside so that if you were a high school graduate from the state of Kansas. Or if you had completed. Other like GED, that you would be eligible. If you did not graduate from a Kansas high school, you need to have resided in the state of Kansas for three years prior. They come in and every community college and every technical college. And those private not-for-profit colleges that are participating. They were able to identify what degree. Or what certificate programs they had within five areas. One is information technology and security. The other is mental and physical health care. The third, advanced manufacturing and building trades. The fourth, you'll love this, early childhood. Education and development. And the fifth was, we let the individual institution pick an area of study. So, some of them picked something that's very regional. It could be law enforcement, it could be fire sciences, it could be ag. So, whatever was particular to that institution was that fifth category. So, one of the sheets that you have is. This is just a sheet that Johnson County Community College prepared. And it is the listing of all of the different programs, certificate or degree programs. That someone could use the Promise Scholarship for. Now, I do want you to know, we understand the need, the continued need for our elementary education as well as our preschool. Certified instructors. And so, that's why we did build in. That a student that wants to go into education. They can transfer from the two-year institution from the, with the Kansas Promise Scholarship. To a four-year institution as long as they already have a two-plus-two agreement, which is a very prescriptive. You need to take these courses the first two years. And then, when you transfer to us, you take the rest of these courses. We do feel. That that is positive in a number of ways. It shows a student the path. It shows the family, from a financial standpoint, a path. By having that two-plus-two partnership, what it also does is it strengthens what I consider to be that continuum of education. So, you graduate from high school, you go to a community technical or private institution. And then, because we have built in these two-plus-two programs, you continue on to a regents institution. And so, we, what we're finding now is KU, K-State, Pitt State. Fort Hays, as well as Emporia. Are renewing two-plus-two programs that had kind of gone into the mothballs. So, we're strengthening that process. So far, this, so this would have just, this just started in August. And there really wasn't, you know, it became law July one, so there wasn't much ramp-up time for the institutions. But so far, one point nine million dollars have been given. That's just to community college students. I don't have the dollar amount for the private or for the technical colleges. And four hundred and fourteen students in our community colleges are now a part of the Promise Scholarship. And this is ongoing. So, a student that perhaps didn't know about it in the fall. Or has, after one semester is kind of narrowing in, this is what I wanna do. They are always eligible to go ahead and fill out that application and start that process. We do know that before the fall semester started, all of the funds that went to the technical colleges had been dispersed. So, we know from the technical college standpoint, that's working very successfully. It's been a little bit more gradual pace at the private not-for-profits. But again, they already have those students in the loop, so they can jump in second semester. So, we know that we already have applicants for this next semester. And some of these schools also have, not the traditional sixteen-week semesters. So, winter term has already started at our college. And so, a student could have picked up a winter term and jumped in with that. So, we feel very confident it will be successful. Now, when I grabbed the booklet that you have with you, you might have noticed, hmm. Unless you were strong in Spanish, it's probably a little difficult to understand. But if you look at the back of it, so I'm sorry, I pulled from the box. The room was dark, I pulled from the box of where the storage, where they keep this at the college. And I thought, great, I have enough to take in. And it was this morning, at about five fifteen, I realized, not so great, not so great. But the English version is, the layout and design is the same. But it does illustrate what we're doing at all of the community colleges. And what we've done with the advertising and promotion. We know that the needs of Kansas families are different. And so, all of the institutions have made sure that they have an English as well as a Spanish version. To make sure that that population, which for the most part is gonna be first generation coming in. That the parents can read it, that other family members can read it. Because I see that this is something that is going to be a part of that momentum that just continues to grow. If you wanna see the English version, on the back is the QRS code, which we are using on most every publication now. And you're starting to see that throughout the state. So, go ahead, take a snapshot of it, get in there and find out what we're doing. But all of the institutions are really doing it. We're pushing it because what we did is we made sure that we were focusing on those in-demand. High-need jobs. Now, for the most part, they're going to be well-paying. There are a few exceptions. We know there's a high demand for our CNAs in every community. Not necessarily the highest paying, but that also earning that CNA certificate. Is a perfect laddering program. So, if you're successful at that, you can take the next step and the next step. And it may end up, three years later, being the registered nurse that sees you in the emergency room. So, like I said, just that I wanted to share this with you. Some of your superintendents in the state. Just jumped right into this. Couldn't be happier to have learned that the superintendent here in Topeka. Made sure that every graduating student had a little flyer about the Kansas Promise Scholarship in the envelope when they graduated. And so, if we get more of our school districts to help in that manner, and as we continue to make sure that counselors. As well as our technical instructors know about this. And I did go with Heather Morgan. We presented to the technical teachers this summer in Manhattan. And we, I think we gave two or three presentations just about it. And one of the most compelling comments we received during one of the presentations was. One of our shop teachers raised his hand and he said, okay, now wait a minute. High school graduate, free tuition, free books, free supplies. Pays for two years. And all they have to do is work in Kansas for two years afterward? We're like, yeah, he said, what's the catch? What's the catch? Where's the unicorn that's gonna spoil it all? And it's like, there is no catch. That is the plan. And we think it's a good plan. And what we're hoping is, we did build into the legislation that. After the first two years, funding would be at a hundred and, it would be capped at a hundred and fifty percent of the year prior actual usage. So, we've built in that we will continue to increase the funding. Because we know how well SB one fifty-five, the CTE program, it started a little slow. And now, it's very, very successful. And we wanna make sure that it's funded. And that Kansas families know that they can be a part of this. And there's no age limit, any age. So, if it's a fifty-five-year-old mom grandma that wants to get in there and always wanted to be a nurse, but seemed like life passed her by. Not too late, she can be a part of this. So, just wanted to share some of that good news.
Thank, we have time, you have time for questions?
Oh, I do.
Okay, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Senator, thank you for coming back and I appreciate the follow-up. I look forward to having those conversations and as somebody who's probably gonna be living over there in the next three months.
I think I know who it is. I know two people that were living in my committee.
So, I appreciate that, that conversation and, and, and we appreciate you coming back. And I'm excited about this promise. Hutch Juco, which is in my district, has been pushing this.
Yes, I have. At the state fair, they handed out T-shirts and they were beautiful.
It was huge. So, I got to be familiar with that as well and it's a really good opportunity. As somebody who falls in that donut hole when I was a kid. On the income side, my family made a little bit too much money to qualify for grants. Not enough to afford college. And that was, you know, fifteen, sixteen years ago, so. It's been a, I wish it existed when I was a student, for sure. So, I appreciate the, the work on that and I think it's a good opportunity for a lot of our students in Kansas.
Thank you.
Betty.
Thank you, and I too want to add my appreciation for, if at first you don't succeed, try, try again. The follow-up on this. As I was sitting here, my, my premise is that so often. We concentrate on students that are either the high end or at the low end.
The bookends.
Yeah, and, and those in the middle are just kind of forgotten, either from an academic standpoint or from an economic standpoint. And one of the things that we often talk about is when we say all students, all Kansas, all. We say that in generalities. But so often, we fail to realize that we're not really looking or addressing all. And so, when I hear of something that fills in the gap, that fills in that void. Where we certainly have bragging rights that we are looking at all Kansans. It is something that I take delight in. So, I just wanted to add my personal gratitude to you. Thank you.
Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Senator Baumgartner, thank you very much for your presentation. It was great, you know, very uplifting, inspiring. One of the things you did mention is the low participation in the FAFSA.
Right.
And I will just tell you that that is a part of the big, bigger conversation in terms of graduation. And there are, I think, twenty-one states that require FAFSA to be completed as a graduation requirement. You know, so that is going to be a conversation that we're gonna be having here in the next, we are having right now and will continue to have into the second semester. And I'm sure it will be addressed in our final report.
I think that's wonderful, thank you so much for that. I do know that the Board of Regents are tackling this also. And one of the approaches that they're taking is having a little bit of competition for individual school districts and individual buildings. For, they're taking what was the baseline from prior years and what, which. Schools and which districts have the highest growth as far as participation. And so, again, you know, I, I think it's, it's a cumbersome process, we know it is. It's also, you know, it's uncomfortable sometimes for a kid to say, okay, mom and dad. I need to have your tax returns from last year. Not all parents wanna just hand that right over and have the kid take that document to school. We also know that not all children have a driver's license when they are in their senior year. And so, we're just trying to find new and different ways to honor those things that are a little personal and confidential for families. But also, to help families understand. This may be the path to help your child attain that education. So, I did wanna let you know. That implementation has been a little bit of a struggle with the Promise Scholarship. And there are a few things, issues that have come up. And so, there is gonna be a trailer bill. And in fact, I've promised that that will be the first bill that's coming out of Senate Education. I can't promise that that's gonna be the first bill that Senate leadership is gonna allow on the floor. From our committee. But there are some things that we wanna fix about it. There, there was built into this that you either graduated from high school within twelve months. Or you were twenty-one years or older. So, we're gonna just close that so that's either graduated from high school or you've lived in the state of Kansas. We do, we do know that there are kids that were eligible for the scholarship. That turned it down because they didn't wanna commit to two years of working in Kansas. We are gonna stick to that because, to be clear, this is all taxpayer-funded. This is all taxpayer-funded. So, we feel that's only appropriate. What we are looking at, because there's been a lot of concern, particularly folks that live in border areas. Fort Scott Community College has had tremendous difficulty with anyone committing to staying in Kansas for work. Because they're just a hop, jump, and a skip over into Missouri. So, they've had kids say, hmm, nope, I don't wanna, I don't wanna commit. We're gonna stick to that. But we are also working on language where they live in Kansas and they pay income tax to Kansas. Because we also know in the metro area, I'll just use St. Luke's Hospital system as an example. They have several facilities in Kansas. The rest are just over the state line. And some of those employees actually rotate every six months or so. And so, we wanna make sure that they can be a part of this. So, as long as they're living in Kansas and paying that income tax, we feel that we can go with that. So, that's, those are some changes, anticipate changes. But they're all designed not to exclude, but to make it even more inclusive. And to eliminate some hurdles that we know were a little bit of concern as they were implementing this year. So, I can't thank you enough, Chairman. Thank you for the privilege. Thank you for the privilege to come and speak with you.
We have another question if you have time.
Yes.
Anne. And then I have, I'll follow up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Senator, for being here. Everybody's really excited about this. I've been a cheerleader for Tech Ed for 20 years, back when I was working for the phone company looking for linemen. So this is very exciting stuff. But Dr. Watson and Jean and I work on the Advantage Kansas Committee that's working to be the best trained workforce. And we're very excited about this being part of the portfolio too. So we're helping promote it, and I've certainly been pushing it with my 29 superintendents. But one of them had a question about that age thing. There's that little donut hole. If you, you're outside the 12 months, but you're not 21, but that's the thing you're gonna close?
That is the thing we're going to eliminate.
Good, okay, then, and that hopefully.
If I have my way.
Yeah.
But yes, that is already, that was first on the list to eliminate. It was too troublesome for people to factor out because some of the students were applying, but would be, when they started, would be outside of. And we just didn't wanna, we're just getting rid of that. So it's either one or the other, and we're good.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I am so encouraged because several things you mentioned we are aware of and working on also. And it caused me to believe, as I've said before in committee hearings and other places, we can do so much if we talk to each other.
Right.
We are in communication with the Board of Regents. We have. And one of the things that they are concerned about and are asking us to help them with is FASA. So that's already on the radar. We have the, we had a four-year extension of the Dyslexia Task Force. We're having our last meeting today.
I saw.
Third grade is a good culminating issue, but you start way before that in order to do that. And we have all sorts of things in play. We've made tremendous progress. Now, we're not there yet, but we have tremendous progress. So, and we have things in place to make sure that teachers are trained. So that's, that's an area, you know, that we certainly are able to gather. So basically, almost everything you talked about are things that we can work together on and things that we can improve kids in Kansas without us making rules or without you making legislation, the things that we can just work together and emphasize. And so I so much appreciate your being here. I appreciate the efforts to communicate. I can certainly accept for us that we will participate in the, in the meetings and, and look forward to, to a very positive relationship. And that will benefit the students of Kansas. I can't, we can't thank you enough for being here. Thank you for your enthusiasm and for your, for your offer to work, to bring us to the table so that we can have these meaningful conversations. Can't thank you enough.
You're so welcome. And I want you to know that some of my assistant is Cindy Rexler, and she doesn't start until we get close to starting session. So she'll be in the office like the week before. We'll make sure that room is scheduled. We'll make sure that the folks here in the Department of Education know when, when and where for that first one. I think it's gonna be our first week that we're in, might be the second week that we're in session.
And if they so, just contact Peggy. Peggy, Peggy keeps us in line.
Peggy will help keep us all in line. Peggy helped me stay a little bit in line. And I, I can say that I know that when Board Member Jones, as well as Board Member Horst, did routinely sit in on the Senate Education Committees, we get into the real issues. We put them on the table. And there were times that, you know, I was hopeful that we would vet a bill or we would get through the process in that one day. But if it took two or three, or sometimes four, we took the time. Because to me, it's more important that we get it right and that we move forward with something that we can live with. But we will always have frank discussions. And so I was very frank the last time that I was here. I will continue to be frank about issues of education. But we will absolutely work to communicate, not at each other, but with each other. And so that's what I want to see happen. I feel that after talking with you, Chairman, that's what you would like to see happen. And I think as long as we do what we try and do in Senate Education is the focus is about the students and what is best for the kids and for Kansas. So I feel very confident then we, when we meet together across the street, if we keep that focus, we'll make that happen. And anything that you can do to help me off on, help me with that other issue of that statement will be helpful, and we'll just keep that conversation going. So thank you so much. I do wish you a blessed Christmas. And by all accounts, the weather's gonna get worse today, not better. And so hope for safety for all of you. So thank you so much. It was a real privilege.
Thank you very much. It's our, it's our pleasure to have you.
Thank you.
Let's take about a 10-minute break. Once, once again, any additional travel requests? Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. ESNAC Superintendent's meeting in Hutchinson on December 20th and December 22nd. A McPherson Legislative Luncheon, salary and mileage both times.
Okay, anything else, Melanie?
The luncheon on January 12th as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Which will be the same day that the legislative office hours will be open.
So less, a motion will be in order to approve the request as amended. Ben and Melanie, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Now, we will have committee reports, starting with the Policy Committee, Jean.
The Policy Committee met yesterday at lunchtime, and we looked at the, the first six policies and finalized our recommendation. We also went on to the next, it's pages six through 12 that we had included and came up with some changes that we thought we might recommend. So we'll be looking at that over the, the next month and a half, and we'll meet again in February.
Thank you. Anything else from our Legislative Liaison, Ben and Deena?
Of course, I fed my mouth before. I finished my report. I had started it, but when I noticed that Craig was giving one, I didn't want to repeat too much of what he'd said. But one of the things that's in the report tells you, it kind of leads you through the special committee, what the topic was and who provided testimony or research. And all of those things are available on the Legislative Research site. And you can go in and click on the little icon and pull up the testimony and read it for yourself if you choose. And one of the things I found interesting was when Nick Myers, who's an Assistant Reviser of Statutes, presented on Article Six. One of the things he emphasized at the very end was that, in his opinion, the framers of Article Six envisioned the different entities, the legislature, the State Board, and the local boards of education as working harmoniously together. And that hopefully will become our focus. We'll have our disagreements. But when we put kids at the top of our, the Kansas kids at the top of what our interest is, it becomes less of an adult issue. That becomes a kid issue. And I always think of our focus that students come first in our decisions. And if we keep that the top of our mind all the time, what's best for kids, then it becomes a little easier to get past the disagreements. And so anyway, I appreciate the folks who gave testimony. And many of the questioners were not particularly kind to our members. And hopefully that will gain a little more respect. And hopefully that will gain a little more respect as time goes on. And we can work on that on a quiet basis as well. So, thank you. And do you, does Ann have a question?
Ann, yes.
Thank you. Be curious how the framers thought the State Board would work with anybody when we didn't exist, when they wrote the Constitution. But, you know, given that, the testimony I heard that kind of bothered me along that same line, though, and I totally agree, I think, you know, hopefully, we all work together. But Mike O'Neill's testimony, I think, I would really like our attorney to look at what he said, because he made a lot of statements about legislature can pretty much do whatever you want, in any area you want. And so, I'd really like to know what our attorney thinks of his testimony in particular. Thanks.
Mike O'Neill's testimony toward the, at the interim committee. And Deena commented about the fact that some of the questions were a little, well, insulting perhaps, and we need to get past that, though, because we need to focus on how we can work together. And so, I think it's so important for us to, even though, today is really encouraging. And hopefully Senator Bob Gardner can influence others to have the same attitude to do that. But we fail at 100% of the things that we don't try. And I think that it's very important for us to keep positive and keep pushing for that effort to work together, because the framers may have said that it hadn't always happened in the past, but that doesn't mean it can't happen in the future if we do everything we can to be positive and open. Thank you. Communications, Jim and Melanie?
We're good.
That's debatable.
I can make something up.
The Governor's Education Council met last week, and they now have the next stage of the Governor's Education Council, as they have recommendations to give to the Governor. That's going to be, I couldn't find that on my calendar. You know when that is, Peggy, January, the, it's about the 20th. We're going to meet with the Governor and present the final report, and then that will be available to the members of this board. Advantage Kansas, Jean and Ann.
I had a written report, everybody ought to have that, about what we're doing, so I'm not going to repeat all that. But I think we're kind of moving to the next phase where, instead of having three subcommittees, because everybody's about meetinged out, we're going to kind of compile our list of action items to create the best trained workforce, best educated workforce in the region, and then just, you know, kind of move back to combined meetings. But they did meet with the Governor, presented her our information, and she's wanted, of course, some more detail, and we're fleshing that out for her and making a budget request today. So hopefully, we can move forward on some of those action items.
Okay, thank you.
I just also wanted to say that one of the things that we've discovered is that a lot of the ideas for each of the committees were also needed participation by other subcommittees. So I think that's why we've kind of combined back into the whole at this point. So I think it'll be a lot more effective, because now everybody's going to be aware of the efforts in every area.
Thank you. Due in all justice, Janet?
We need to establish three subcommittees, two look at different ways of the programs that we're offering these students, rather than incarceration. And I think I, the committee I'm on with, we have just met this week, and we're trying to get data regarding all this stuff and have it presented and determine whether or not we should continue with the programs or not. So I think it's kind of exciting. We're moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Are there other committee reports that I have missed? If not, Mark?
It's been a pretty busy month with a couple of different lawsuits that I've reported on in separate summaries and memos. Those are matters of, most of that's most, matters of public record. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions about the status of the Rollins petition for judicial review, or the lawsuit involving the Open Records Act, which has now been recently dismissed and may possibly be refiled in Shawnee County. I was reflecting on the previous month, and while in the previous board meeting and kind of behind the scenes, we were working on a PPC case, and nothing has, you know, time has expired on that appeal. And so, as a kind of a follow-up and wrap-up, I think it's worth noting that while we spent quite a bit of time discussing that, both in the board meeting and reading the materials and working with you to develop a final order on that case, it appears that that's been fully resolved and not, will not be proceeding. And so, that's the end of that issue. Then, there was just one thing that kind of, when I watched the different listservs and notifications that come out, there was one that caught my attention, I thought was somewhat interesting, because it comes from the category of, no matter what you do, you're going to get sued, topic, that you can't make everybody happy, because no matter what action you take, there's a reaction that occurs that might end up in litigation. From, in the listserv that we got from, notification from the state of Colorado, they were talking about a recent lawsuit where Colorado passed a statute prohibiting Native American mascots in schools, claiming that that was discriminatory and racially biased. And as a result, a group of Native American plaintiffs has sued the state, taking the position that this law prohibiting Native American mascots in public schools is unconstitutionally, is unconstitutional, and it's unlawfully enacts state-sanctioned race discrimination against Native Americans. And so, while that law was, at least those that proposed it, would suggest that it was to eliminate racial bias, the Native Americans brought a lawsuit to claim that they did not want to have that law on the books, because it intentionally discriminated against them and eliminated their culture and their heritage by eliminating those racial references. And then, just a quick search of the internet, looks like that that was, although the legislature didn't take any action in 2021, that issue has come before Kansas, and not in statute or case law, but it was one of the prongs of the Governor's Task Force on Racial Equity and Racial Bias, in terms of analyzing that issue. So, that no action was taken on it, but it is a trend that you're seeing across the country. I think the first state to pass a law prohibiting the use of Native American mascots in public schools was in Maine. This is most recent development in Colorado. There are other states that have developed that. And as there's an ongoing conversation about, you know, various racial issues, I think it's just instructive of the fact that you're damned if you do, damned if you don't, on some of those legal issues. So, that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there questions, Mark? If not, now's the time for requests for future agenda items. Jean?
I had a couple of things I thought might be interesting for us to see, or to work on in the future. And one was substitutes licensing. We've been inundated, basically, with requests to make it easier for districts to get substitutes. And I think that that would be an area where we could make an impact and really help at the local district level. I think we should do that sooner than later, because districts are still desperate for substitutes. And I think it has an effect on student learning. It definitely has an effect on the anxiety of teachers who need to be off but feel guilty about requiring other people to do, take over their classes. And it affects administrators who have to step in and do everything from being the lunch person, to the bus driver, to the substitute for several classes. So I think it could really make a big impact if we could, we could work on that. The other thing that I am interested in seeing more presented on would be individual plans of study. We know what they are and what we expect from them, but I don't know how districts have embraced them and how thoroughly they are looking at them. We see constantly, in a variety of ways, different committees talking about them as being sort of pivotal to whatever is going on in that committee to be accomplished. For example, in the graduation task force, where we're saying students need to take classes that meet with their individual plan of study. But I'm really not sure of how robust that is being done at the district school level. And I would like to know more about that, and I would like to also see how thoroughly KISA, when the, as districts go through the accreditation process, examine the robustness of student individual plan of study. Because I think it's sort of a linchpin in so many things that we've talked about. So those are my two areas I think would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Betty?
This is kind of a reminder request, Chairman Porter. And you had talked a few months back about the board and a retreat. And I would like to just kind of remind you, I do think that it would be great if we did have the opportunity to revisit, revamp, re-engage the board vision, making sure that we are all on the same page. Many times, I feel we look at things, and as a new member, it seems like it's more in a silo. This segment is not necessarily related to the other, and I think it just would be a good opportunity, if you would, go ahead and look at that and set something up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Jim and then Melanie?
Chairman Porter, I would like to see us get a report on KISA. It's been mentioned by Senator Bob Gardner, it's been mentioned here already at the table in terms of future agenda items. And it's not a wagging the finger at them, they've done anything wrong, but how's it going? You know, especially as we go into the large number of districts that are going to be coming up for accreditation, you know, what their plans are and how to do that. But generally speaking, how's it going? You know, it's been on the table now, this is going into three years, and maybe we need to do an evaluation, mid-course correction, or just an update and reaffirm our commitment to it.
And I think that fits real well into one of the things that Jean brought up, and that is KISA, individual plans of study is part of that process. And I believe that there are districts that are actually doing a tremendous job, and maybe others that are not. And maybe we need to reemphasize the importance of that and help those districts that may be struggling to.
And I would also remind the board, and doing, all of a sudden changing your school operations, where it focuses on individual plans of study, requires a great deal of time, effort, and energy. For some, this will be a huge change. For others, it'll just be a, you know, clip around the corners. But for, I believe, and it doesn't mean that districts that were, that it's a huge change, have been doing anything bad, but we're asking them to do something new. And that workload, especially if they keep trying to do everything they've done in the past, is just going to overwhelm them. And that's sometimes what I hear as a criticism. And I say, are you still trying to do everything you used to do? You know, so it would be good to have a, an update on the progress and also critique on the negative and unsatisfactory experiences as well.
Thank you. Melanie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually going to piggyback on Jean's as well, and I'd just like to add that while we're talking about substitute licensing, I think it would be good to also discuss the obstacles, things that prevent folks from being able to apply for and make it through that process. I've had questions in my own district about the fees that are associated with applying for the licenses, which I understand are largely fingerprinting, but it would be good to have an overview of all of the fees that are wrapped up in that, these for transcripts. What does that application process look like? So I just wanted to get that on record, if somebody's going to do the work for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Chairman Porter. Yeah, a little bit on the substitutes and the teachers. After talking with Michelle Miller yesterday, we're trying to, if we're trying to say, okay, we have, you know, 16 licensed teachers in the building, and maybe it's a temporary, looking at it as a temporary, are we talking two weeks? Is it going to be the next 18 months? What can we use to, what can we do to utilize the licensed teachers that we do have? And kind of what we did when we were at home and we were doing, we were working from home and the children were online, some of those things, we were trying to do projects, more project-based work, crossing over from maybe chemistry, sci, I mean, if you have a chemistry teacher, you have a science background, I mean, what can we do to look at each district and see where our needs are, and reach out with resources, and help them to kind of look at, look at their strategies, look at their teaching a little bit differently within the building, based on all those licensed teachers that they do have in the building, and utilize their resources? That was something we just talked about yesterday. Another thing is when we met last Friday with a superintendent in our area, Melanie and I did, one of the things that the superintendent had brought up was, we have so many different, based on testimony, two weeks ago, we have so many different people calling things CRT, what is it, what it is, it is not, and who defines it this way? Obviously, we had people coming forward to their school boards, talking about things that they were seeing, and when they were home online, they were hearing different things, and they didn't like what they were seeing or hearing. So they went to their local building and talked about that with their principal, or went to their school board and complained. So she's trying to say, can we, is there, can we kind of define it from a state, she asked for that, from a state-level perspective, as far as, yes, it's not in our standards, it's not on the assessments, but there's obviously something going on where parents are very distraught about what's coming home as far as assignments and books and things like that. So is there, she just wants to have, is there, is there a line that we need to draw with teachers, teaching, what can they do, what can they not do? She wanted some help on that, so she got back to me on email as well. Yes.
Man.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In my many school visits, and the one thing that has come up time and again with the addition of ESER and trying to deal with all the ESER monies, it has paced a really large load of work on admin, both at the building and district levels. And I know you guys are aware of it, this is more of acknowledgement that I'm hearing it from the field, and the desire is, what can we as a department put off in exchange for ESER, or things that we can delay? They get that everything's important, but it's, it's become more work and relieving the admin of being healthcare workers. That's been something that I've heard a lot, and I know it's not an us thing, and they know that, but. But, but if there's something that we can as a department take off the plate of our admin and our district offices, and I think that will trickle down to the staff and everything else as well to a part. So, thank you.
Okay. And when I first got on this board, whenever we had a request for future agenda items, somebody might mention something every month or so. And it was easy to accommodate. But now I think we're more engaged than we've been in the past. And so there's numerous things that come up. There's no way to accomplish all this next month, you know, or the next three or four months. Because next month, we're going to have the same, same thing. We'll do the best we can as quick as we can. But unless we want to have three or four day meetings, and which is okay with me, because I have everything else to do. But, but we will, we will, we, we want to be responsive to those requests. But we also want, don't want to hurry the discussion. And those are competing terms, so we'll have to make some decisions about when and where. Because we can't get to everything all at once. So you just need to understand that. We had another meeting with the KASB leadership and we discussed the same things. Just to discuss the progress, there is a waiver. We're, we're sort of, as the senators say, sort of put on hold the, the territory thing. Because there is a waiver process that where the, both the, the chair or the president of the Board of Regents and the, and the receiving and sending institution have a waiver process. So that can be addressed that way. We, we have found that we still have the request for FAFSA. One of the concerns that we had about requiring FAFSA was those people that either can't or won't fill out the FAFSA. And if we look at things from other states, we found that there are three, typically there are three ways to waiver out of that. One of them is that the parent can waiver out of it if they want to. The student can waiver out of that if they're 18 or above. And if there's a reason, well, quite frankly, there are people that are not going to fill them out because of their immigration status. And if that's the case, the school can waiver out for them. So there's, there is a way that it can be wavered out. But if the default is fill out the FAFSA, and that's what basically is happening in other states, it significantly not only increases the FAFSA participation, it also significantly increases the secondary, the post-secondary participation. So that's, that's where we're in that discussion. And then we discussed creative ways to provide the 15 hours using existing funding sources without having to ask the state for additional money. And there's some, some, some positive discussion on that. We will have another meeting. But they have asked that we participate as, at a joint meeting. And this is in addition to our regular meeting on February the 17th. That's the second day of the Board of Regents meeting and that we would meet there on that date. They are asking that the graduation task force, you're probably aware of this, Jim, but the graduation task force actually present to their meeting, is that in January?
January 20.
January 20.
It'll be the morning before the in-person graduation task force got up.
And anybody that would want to go in support of that is willing to do so. We have been invited by the KASB advocacy group to go to a breakfast. This is the Wednesday morning of our next meeting at 7:30 at KASB. And I would encourage those of you that can to go to that and let Peggy know. Remember that at, that after, that at lunch that day, we meet with the CTSO groups. In, in February, at our meeting in February, we have been invited to the CARES breakfast. And so we want to participate in that. I think that basically all of us went the last time. And, and the more we participate, it's good to have that relationship. And Janet and I have been invited to participate in the Zoom conference with other state board chairs and vice chairs with the Secretary of Education. And that's going to be on December the 21st. At one of our last meetings, Janet requested that we do something to express our support for our staff here. And so there is a proposed, do we have copies of the resolution to give to everybody? We have a proposed resolution that Janet is going to read, that we will discuss it. And if it is approved by the group, we will vote on it. Let's get it passed out first. And since it's a resolution, it has to be read. You certainly may.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is not about the resolution. But what I'd like to say is, after hearing all the requests for future agendas, I want to remind you about my Basar Lindwood request. I was thinking, you know, there are too many for us to take on immediately or very, you know, take quite a while. We have discussed it in the future at previous board meetings, the possibility of, excuse me, the possibility of having, at least extending our Wednesday meeting to an afternoon, all afternoon. And I think we need to revisit that and see if the board would be interested in doing that. I know the biggest challenge will be Gene. But anyway, I think that's my suggestion.
Yeah, Gene's always a challenge. She won't even go eat with us.
Anyway, so now do you want me to continue with the, with the resolution? Okay. I would like to preface this with the fact that, as you all know, I have brought up the mental health of our schools, of our students, first of all. And then, of course, our schools and the entire staffs in our buildings of the challenges they have faced during COVID. And after all this, I got to thinking, we haven't said anything about this department. This department, I've been around the longest, so I can tell you, they're amazing. Some of you have been around a short time, and I think maybe you kind of agree with me. I can't tell you, I've made so many dear friends here. And I call these people on many occasions and ask them sometimes dumb questions. And they're very kind and they always work with me and they get back to me right away. And I've never heard anyone complain about anything that I've asked or anything. And they've always been so prompt and so kind and considerate. And I know I'm taking up part of their day, you know? So anyway, due to this and due to all the, and I know they have faced extraordinary challenges during COVID. And I am so very, very appreciative. So after visiting with Dr. Watson and several other people, we decided to come up with this resolution. So here's the resolution that we are proposing. The State Board of Education submits the following resolution. Whereas the Kansas State Department of Education provides leadership, resources, support, and accountability to the state of Kansas K-12 education system. And whereas the Kansas Department of Education administers the state's governance of education standards and assessments, teacher licensure and accreditation, special education services, early childhood education, child nutrition and wellness, the programs and services, career and technical education, and financial aid. And whereas it is the goal of the agency to provide all Kansas children with equal access to quality, high-level education that promotes student achievement and prepares all students for global success. And whereas the Kansas State Board of Education in 2015 established a bold new vision, excuse me, that Kansas education leads the world in the success of each student. And whereas KSDE staff members have worked tirelessly to ensure Kansas education realizes this bold vision by achieving the areas of social-emotional growth, kindergarten readiness, individual plans, plan of study, civic engagement, academically prepared for post-secondary graduation and post-secondary success. And whereas March 2020 marked the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic that would suddenly and severely alter the needs and operation of the Kansas K-12 education system. And whereas KSDE staff members worked above and beyond to provide the supports needed to keep schools operating and students learning in a safe environment throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, all while, while, all while never, while never losing focus on the work needed to achieve the board's vision for education. And whereas KSDE staff members have worked diligently to dispense critical ESER and ENS relief funds to Kansas educational systems and to ensure these functions are being used in compliance with federally established, with federally established criteria. And whereas KSDE staff members continue to respectfully and exponentially fulfill all requests for education reports, data, public presentations, and training issued by the Kansas Legislature, the Kansas State Board of Education, and the public in order to support the work of these, the work of these bodies. Whereas KSDE staff members are dedicated to serving the educational needs of all Kansas children without the need for, need or expectation for accolade. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kansas State Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to the staff members and KSDE for their extraordinary contributions and dedication to Kansas education during the most challenging period in our nation's recent history. I so move.
Has been moved or is there discussion? Ben.
Just a point of order. Mark, do we, because it's not on the agenda, well, I guess we amended the agenda as an action item. So we could take up action without having to do a vote to suspend the rules to pass something and then pass it, correct?
We amended the agenda and I indicated that would be in action.
Okay. I'm just making sure that we don't have to do a two-part process. Thank you.
Taking it up in the middle of the agenda and converting it from an information act. Okay. Is there a second? Melanie seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Call in favor. Raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously with our heartfelt thanks to the people in this department. I need to say that regularly, since, since I don't have a job, I send stuff to the department when I think about it. And it may be at 11 o'clock on Saturday night. And I have gotten answers at that time. And I always say, you don't have to answer it, you go back to work. But, but that's the rule, not the exception. You know, weekends, holidays. I just think that, that we have a bunch of great people working here that, that actually don't take very good care of themselves. And I think that is very appropriate.
Could I say one more thing?
You certainly may.
Thank you so much. I wish we could do much more. To me, this is the minimal, minimum that we can do. So I would request, and I'm confident each of you probably do this anyway, that if you see anyone in the department, just tell them thank you. I mean, just every time you see them, say thank you. And if they've really done something extra special, say thank you very much. Because, you know, I just, I think they're just amazing. I stand in awe of the department. So, and I'd like to publicly thank you very much for everything you do. Thank you.
Our next item is the graduation task force report. We'll look forward to that and we will reconvene at 10:40 for that report.
The students today and tomorrow, that we will be serving by the decisions we make and the recommendations that this task force makes on graduation requirements. You know, the graduation requirements, why? Is that we need to look at the things that we've already done. The vision that we have, that Kansas leads the world in the success of each student, is a great challenge. You know, the outcomes that we have, that students, you know, academic and cognitive preparation, a technical and employability skills, along with civic engagement that allow them to succeed in a post-secondary education and the attainment of industry-recognized certificate, where they are successful in the workforce without remediation. You know, those are the two frameworks that guide our work. So the why of why we're here, it's time for us to connect and link the graduation requirements, which is the operationalization of our vision and outcomes. You know, and that's the why of this task force. The charge from the commissioner was that the task force will identify any courses that should be added or no longer be required for graduation. Second, we conduct a review of the competencies and identify multiple ways to show mastery of skills that will allow students to move on their own, at their own pace and time. The third was to study the benefits of or a need for requiring value-added assets in addition to the high school diploma, such as an industry-recognized certificate, college credits, the FASSA, you know, things that we've talked about. Whoops, forgot to do the, I'm not used to making reports. I'd like to introduce the folks that are going to be part of this. You know, and the first ones I'll recognize and thank are going to be the state board members who are on the task force. Betty Arnold, Jean Clifford, and Melanie Haas. Thank you for your extra time and your expertise and your values and perceptions of the future and supporting our students. The co-chair for our task force is Jared Furman. He's the principal at Baser Linwood High School. Jared is here and you'll be hearing from Jared soon. And Jared is, by the way, the principal of the school that we just recognized the other day for their, and you called, I call it projects program, but you have...
Uh huh. Project-based learning.
Project-based learning.
Actually, Janet and Dr. Watson were able to come out and visit some projects that we're doing in our school.
That's what was presented to us.
Jared is the co-chair and quite frankly, a driving force as we move forward. Whoops. The leadership team, besides Jared and myself, you know, has been broken into three subcommittees of courses added or deleted, if any, demonstrating mastery and competency and value-added diplomas, you know, which we'll introduce here in just a moment. The task force timeline was from June 24th of '21 to May 11th of 2022. So we are moving quickly. We have been meeting basically every other Thursday for six months now. And it's been a great experience. One of the things that we did first was we reviewed and interviewed and received presentations and information from states, from other states, what they were doing in updating or changing high school graduation. And there's about 26 states that have since 2019 undertaken some review of graduation requirements. Almost half the states are doing something in that regard. The Education Commission of the States presented a 50-state review of graduation requirements across the United States. Alaska only requires 13. Go figure. Most of them require around 24, 25. Some states, like Pennsylvania, leave it totally up to the local districts to decide their graduation requirements. Other states take the approach that we have, many of them, that we will, the state has a requirement to have those graduation requirements that they want, and then they allow local districts to add more. That's the prevailing way they do it. We did have some direct conversations and presentations from Ohio, Washington, Illinois, New Hampshire. We took a historical look at Kansas graduation that was presented to us by Mark Tallman, Kansas Association of School Boards, and that was great. We created a group focused on the special needs of students, led by Tis Faulkman from Lawrence Gardner High School, Kansas Juvenile Correction Complex, looking at special education and special needs students in special circumstances. I know that's supposed to work, and you say it's going to work, but it's not working.
There you go.
What's that?
It's working.
Oh, there it goes. The most important people that I think besides Jared on this task force are quite frankly, you know, our three subcommittee chairs. As I mentioned, we have three subcommittees that we broke into. The courses added or deleted is being led by Kristi Meyer, the principal of Eisenhower High School in Goddard, Kansas. Mastery of Skills and Competencies Demonstrated is being led by Ed Rains, the principal at Washburn Rural High School here in Topeka. And the value-added diplomas and industry-recognized certificates and credits are Kelly Nusser from Principal at Lyons High School in Lyons, Kansas. And I have to say, if nothing else from this project, I have met four outstanding principals and educational leaders in our state. This is by far one of the most high-functioning, successful group of principals I've ever had the opportunity to work with. They're great. They've done a great job. And with that, we're going to move into the subcommittee chairs. And the first one is going to speak to us about what their subcommittee has been doing, talking about, thinking, and where they're headed. Though I have to tell you, please realize, this is a report, not a final, you know, recommendations. You know, would be that each of these three subcommittee chairs will come up and tell you about what their subcommittee is doing, how they're working, and what the outlook is. So the first one is going to be Kristi Meyer, principal at Eisenhower Goddard High School.
First of all, this is my first time being able to present to all of you, and I just wanted to say a personal thank you. I appreciate each and every one of you and all that you do for Kansas kids, so thank you. It's been my honor to lead my subcommittee. Like Keith mentioned, it's not just us. Every one of these committees is just absolutely fabulous. They are dedicated educators. We almost have 100% participation at every meeting. We have really great discussions. When I was first told that I would be leading the committee that's just adding or deleting, I was like, oh, this is great, because that's pretty black and white, you know, this will be fairly easy. Oh goodness, no. This has been a busy six months. We have had some really rich discussions, very meaningful. We were really trying to look at how are we going to move the needle, have, you know, capture this opportunity to do so, but also do so within the scope of acceptable change. Because we know that, you know, we have to be able to make this work. So right now, honestly, I'll tell you that our subcommittee is in the middle of looking at some really big ideas. We're starting to, you know, make those come to fruition, but there's not a lot that has been absolutely decided. With the exception, we've had lots of discussions about the specific number of credits. Right now, we have the number of 21 credits. We looked at, should that be increased, decreased? And overall, what we've decided right now is that it is probably important for us to keep it at 21. Most, if not all, districts in the state of Kansas have increased that. But we want to keep the autonomy with the districts to allow them to do so. Unfortunately, most recently, we had an unforeseeable event, the pandemic, where some districts did capitalize on the option to reduce that number of credits to make sure our kids are graduating. Another subgroup that's really important that we thought we need to make sure we protect are kids that face difficulties, like foster kids. So we wanted to make sure that there is an option for districts to make sure that that is the minimum. But as I said, most if not all districts make sure that requirement is higher. So we do like the fact that we'll just keep it at the 21. The big focus idea that we are focusing on right now is the idea that we need to move from this one-track system that we've had for decades, that was primarily focused on making sure kids are prepared for a four-year college degree. We know that not all kids are doing that. So we really want to look at some type of system that provides flexibility. So what we are looking at are grouping some of our courses, instead of just having ELA, science, math, et cetera, grouping some of those courses in with other courses like career and tech ed courses. For example, taking the ELA credits, maybe adding in communication or other career and tech ed courses, and allowing some flexibility with the students directly related to their individual plan of study. This allows us to make sure we're focusing in on the individual student needs, instead of just saying there's one blanket plan for everyone. We also believe this will help students buy in in their learning process and feeling like their education is important. The addition of adding the career and tech ed courses into these classes and perhaps requiring some of those is actually also encouraging our students to not just look at the content areas, but look at exploring those career and tech ed options for them and really looking at their post-secondary future, what that looks like. It may be taking a class that they think they love, and then they don't love it, but that in itself is a success, because then it helps them move on and figure other things out. Also, within this grouping system, what we're looking at right now, so we don't have a final product at this time, is what do those groupings look like? What are their names? How many credits are involved? So that's the discussion that we're in right now and hope to have that finalized by May. We are also, along with those discussions, looking at the possibility of awarding credit for mastery. For example, using the state assessment or the ACT, a certain mastery score, awarding a credit in some of those content areas. And that does kind of bleed into one of the other committees, so they'll be visiting with you about that as well. Some specific possibilities that we're looking at as far as additions or changes, we talked about looking at the PE credit, and it's right now a full credit, splitting that into one-half health credit and then one-half PE, because we believe that health is important, and that's come up in some of our data. We are also looking at the addition, possible addition of a personal finance credit and/or a possible addition of a communication credit. And then we are also looking at that fine arts credit, should it stand alone, or should there be some other options added to that, for example, a foreign language credit. So those are some, the summary of where our committee is right now. Like I said, we have some great minds and lots of great ideas, and they're starting to come together. And I'm confident when we come back in May, we'll have a great plan for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. And you got a lot of information there, as you will from the others. And I just want to remind you, these are discussions we're having right now, you know, that we're, everything's on the drawing board. We're not, you know, eliminating things and then moving on. We're talking about it all. And actually, we talk about it, and we talk about more, and then we come back to it. So there's a lot of give and take in this, you know. The second subcommittee chair that's going to speak with you is for Mastery of Skills and Competencies Demonstrated, led by Ed Rains, the principal at Washburn Rural High School. Dr. Rains?
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to provide you with a high-level overview of the work of my subcommittee thus far. Just like to echo some of the sentiments that Kristi shared about her subcommittee. This is an outstanding group of professionals that represent a wide variety of audiences within the education community. We have representation on our committee from the Kansas Board of Regents. We have some business leaders on it as well, school counselors, administrators. So a lot of thoughtful people who really contribute in significant ways to the conversations that we are having. The initial work of our group set out to address four broad questions that were put forth by Dr. Watson. And one of those was developing a letter of support for competency-based approaches. The second area of focus was recommendations for building support for competency-based education approaches across different constituencies and across different audiences. So how do we talk about competency-based education with parents, with students, with people who are laypeople, so to speak, to the particular concept? We were also charged with providing specific recommendations for overcoming barriers or obstacles for such approaches, i.e. removing regulatory or legal barriers, such as seat time stipulations. And then fourth, we were charged with specific strategies for helping to move school district administrators, teachers, et cetera, beyond the current organizational paradigm of the school day. In other words, beyond how school districts currently structure the day. At the secondary level, for example, you have a certain number of periods, kids earn credit, by the end of a semester, they get their credits, they move on. So many of the great ideas emerged from these discussions. And over the course of about six weeks, eight broad themes emerged from the research that we did and from the discussions that we had. And we are currently focusing on those broad themes to formulate recommendations to the larger task force. And so the first theme that emerged from those discussions was defining, how do we define competency-based education in a way that encompasses the complexity of the idea, but yet in a way that's comprehensible? but yet in a way that's comprehensible to, as I said, a wide variety of audiences? And how do we make it easy to embrace the concept? And so there's certainly a marketing component to that, because when you can provide visual aids and those kinds of things to help explain concepts, it's always helpful. Two, what constitutes mastery? And who gets to decide that? Is that something that's decided at the state level? Is that something that's decided by local school districts in the tradition of local control that Kansas has always valued? Three, how is competency-based education similar to the current system? And how is it different? Why is it needed? Why is it better? In short, what is the compelling why for even looking at competency-based education in the first place? Four, how will or should students be asked to demonstrate mastery? What kind of models, assessments, rubrics, et cetera, will we recommend to the larger committee? We felt like choice is something that's going to be very important in that regard, because many times in education, we have summit of assessments, and that's how we measure growth. Are there other ways to do that? And I think we need to be in a position to give school districts, you know, a wide variety of options where demonstrating mastery is concerned. Five, what are the potential impacts of competency-based systems? As it relates to early graduates, we're exploring a variety of considerations. Some of the things that we've talked about, are kids who graduate from high school early, for example, socially and emotionally ready to go on to college? The counterpoint to that is, are the kids who are in high school for four years that graduate when they're supposed to? Are they socially, emotionally ready right now? You could argue both sides of it, but that's an example of one of the considerations that we're looking at, as well as some that may be related to financial considerations. What recommendations will be made related to reporting CBE progress to post-secondary institutions? Many of our kids who go on to vocational technical schools, who go on to post-secondary institutions, two-year colleges, four-year colleges, they're still being evaluated within the context of grades. And in competency-based education, you don't necessarily have grades. So how do we communicate progress, achievement in a competency-based model in a way that is comprehensible to post-secondary institutions? And so we're working on recommendations related to that as well. How might we scale up to implementation or the addition of competency-based approaches? What would a timeline look like? Do we start with low-hanging fruit? For example, if you have a kid that's working in the financial industry sector outside of the regular school day, and they're working as a teller in a bank, are there things that they're doing in that capacity that could demonstrate competencies or objectives in a particular course that we could give them credit for, so that they weren't actually sitting in a seat to earn that? So that's an example of what we're talking about there. And then finally, who ultimately decides the path that a student may take? And what roles does the individual plan of study play in all of this? Because really, that's foundational. In our current system, it's foundational in a competency-based system. And so we're looking at how to make that more integral to the process. So that's kind of a high-level overview of the areas that we're addressing. We're in the kind of formative stages of that right now, in terms of our recommendations, and we hope to be able, in the not-too-distant future, to present recommendations to the broader task force for their consideration. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ed. Our next presenter and subcommittee chair is Kelly Nussar, the principal at Lyons High School, will talk to us about value-added diplomas, industry-recognized certificates, college credits, such. Kelly?
Thank you, Jim. And again, thank you to all of you guys for your service to the schools and the students and the all educators of Kansas. That's a very tough task to undertake, but thank you for those services. And again, thank you for being, for allowing me to be part of this task force. I think this is a great opportunity for bringing the graduation requirements into the 21st century. A lot of these things that we're being, talking about are things that will help our students become successful in their life after high school. As far as the value-added diplomas and market value assets that we have been looking at during our subcommittee work, one thing that we're constantly reminding ourselves and committee members is of the goals and the vision of the State Board of Education and the Department of Education, so that the ideas and the eventual recommendation of the subcommittee will reflect the goals and the vision. The value-added and market value assets that we have been talking about for students, that would help them demonstrate that these students are ready and prepared to be successful in post-secondary, whether that be in college, whether that be in their career, or even in the military. We have had excellent discussion in our subcommittee with the various members. We have a variety of backgrounds on the subcommittee, and that has been very, very helpful as we've been weighing and looking at what those various value-added diplomas and market value assets will be as we get to the eventual recommendation. We've, as I mentioned, we've had a great deal of discussion over these. We really kind of look at them in two different ways. They're looking at market value assets, in whether that be academic, or whether that be in work-based and real-world experiences. And so what we're trying to do is provide a list, a bouquet, so to speak, of market value assets or value-added diplomas. And so that way, the students will have a flexibility. School districts will have a flexibility in what that will be. So we're talking about whether that's be two or three. We haven't decided on that, but the more market value assets that we have, students again will be demonstrating that that diploma means something and that they are ready for life after high school. The constant reminder that we want to do in our subcommittee is to have the flexibility. I think it's very important that school districts will have a say in what some of those market value assets or value market, or the value-added diplomas can and will be. So along with the discussion with all of these various market value assets and value-added diplomas, is the importance of having a robust individual plan of study. That's been mentioned many times already today, and that is very important for our students to be having that vision, that goal, and that working as they work towards achieving their IPS and the diploma as they graduate high school. So another thing that we're also keeping in mind in our subcommittee is making sure that we have, are centering the ability of each and every student to be able to meet that graduation requirement, whether it's from the largest high school to the smallest high school, the student that struggles the most to, in the schoolwork, to the student who breezes through high school because of their abilities. But so, but we want to keep in mind that, and also the various populations and special populations that we are dealing with in our schools, so that they can meet that. What we're trying to make sure we keep in mind is that we don't make this a barrier for them to earn their diploma. And so with all of these discussions and subcommittee work, it's been very valuable, and it's been a very rewarding process as well. So we are continuing our discussions. We have another meeting tomorrow. So that pretty much is our update as far as this subcommittee work that we're centered around. So thank you.
Good morning. Well, Jim told me that I was standing in between you guys at lunch. So I love being in that position. I've been there many times before. But I just really wanted to start off just saying thank you. It's been awesome to be able to work with Gene and Betty and Melanie and Dr. Watson and these three back here, and I don't want to forget Jim. It's just been an outstanding opportunity personally and professionally for me. I remember in, at the end of June, you know, as a principal, that July is pretty sacred. And I remember I get a call from Jim, and he said, hey, Jared, what do you think about being on this committee? Well, yeah, that'd be great. Well, I'd really like you to be the co-chair. Okay. But it's been awesome, you know? I'm very passionate about this, not only as a principal, but also as a parent of a seventh grader and a fourth grader, you know? And really, what's going to be best for my kids and for all kids? And I love walking in here and seeing, you know, our students come first in each one of your decisions. And I just am so thankful for you guys and the opportunity to be on this and help facilitate this task force. You know, we've made a ton of progress, as you've heard from these three leaders. We've tried to really focus on, I think, three things, and one of those is the IPS, you know, that individual plan of study, and really what's best for each and each and every kid. Equity, we talk a lot about equity, and Kelly just mentioned that, about, you know, Baser Linwood, where I'm at, versus a Lyons, Kansas, and making sure it's equitable for each and every kid, whether you're at a big school or a small school. And I think that's important. And really, how are our kids leaving us? And Ed talked a little bit about that. Are they leaving us with the skills that they need to be successful post-high school? And so I think that's really been our focus as we've taken this last six months through this graduation task force. We've had such enriching conversations within our subcommittees, within our leadership group, and within the entire task force. So I'm very excited moving forward. It's a challenge, and when Jim says challenge, I'm not sure he's emphasizing that enough, how much of a challenge this is and how much this is going to be. We're always trying to keep those kids as our focus. So as we do look ahead, as Kelly said, we do have a meeting tomorrow to kind of finish up before holiday break. Our goal is to meet January 20th, and we're going to meet here in Topeka in person, which I will say it's very nice to see all you guys in person today. But we're going to plan on meeting as a task force in person and really come together each subcommittee. Our task to them is to have some recommendations to present to the full task force at the end of January. Jim and I have been working behind the scenes on how do we get this information out? Because I know one of the most important pieces is that we connect with stakeholders, stakeholders everywhere, parents, principals, organizations, all sorts of, all corners of the state. I think it's important for us to relay that information and to receive feedback, because we are prepared. We will receive positive feedback and we'll receive negative feedback. And all of that, in my opinion, is valuable for us to really structure these, to be able to come back in May and present that, those findings to this board. So as we, as we get into January and we get into February, Jim and I, like I said, we put together, or we're starting to put together, how we're going to relay that information to all the stakeholders, to be able to give everybody an opportunity, give feedback. And then our goal is to be here in May, and we'll be able to present those recommendations here to the state board for you guys to look at and make a decision on. But thank you for letting me come here today and letting our group present. We're going to be available for questions. I don't know if we'll be able to answer all those questions, but we'd love to be able to take some of those at this, at this time. Yeah.
Well, that takes the pressure off of you, because now I'm between the middle lines.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
One thing, I do want to thank the subcommittee chairs that are here today, the leadership team. I want to thank the state board members that are participating. I want to thank the task force members from around the state, as well as all the individuals that have contacted us already with ideas, recommendations, suggestions, and questions. This has been probably one of the most professionally challenging and, quite frankly, exciting opportunities that I've had personally, you know, as we look forward to this. So with that, we stand for questions and make them easy.
This is, this is not really a question, but every one of you that made a presentation predicated on a rigorous individual plan of study. We have conditionally accredited a few schools. I think, if I'm not mistaken, every one of those schools that we've conditionally accredited have issues with their independent individual plan of study. We, you can't answer this. This is just, I just see this as a barrier that we need to be addressing, is that we need to make sure that our accreditation system is such that it requires a rigorous individual plan of study, because, because if the success of what you're doing, or what your recommendations depend on tying success to an individual plan of study, and it is deficient in some schools, then that's going to prevent success there. So that's, I say, that's just a statement, it doesn't have anything to do, you have identified it, I think you identified it right. The next issue, and I don't know whether you discuss this or not, but you know, we have, what we've been told is the highest graduation rate in the history of the state, but it's 86%, which means there's a few thousand kids that don't graduate. And I would hope that at some point, I'm sure you've had this, but I hope at some point, you'll discuss what are the barriers to that four, five thousand kids that didn't graduate? And what we can do to eliminate some of those barriers? I really am excited about competency discussions. If you have a Nashville recording contract, do you really need a fine arts credit? You know, if you have a contract, if you're an actor, an employed actor, do you need a drama contract? If you own your own business, and some 15-year-olds do, and it's successful, there needs to be a way to do it. If you're an Eagle Scout, or you've done a whole lot of things that require a lot of skills, and so the fact that we can give credit for those sorts of things is exciting to me. I appreciate what you're doing. I recognize that we've never done it this way before, and that sometimes is a barrier. You are stepping on a lot of people, and we recognize and appreciate that, but we cannot continue to do what we've done. As I said before, I graduated before any of you were born, and the graduation requirements that I graduated with, except I counted them differently, were about the same as they are now. And I am as old as I look, which means that there's been a lot of changes in the world during that time, and it's time to do something. It's time to at least consider this. But we need, we need to know what the barriers are for those three, four thousand kids that aren't graduating. And if there are barriers that we can eliminate, that needs to be part of the discussion. And I'll quit preaching now, because we are actually on the same page, and...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hate to see you guys standing while we talk at you, but...
They're principals, they know how to speak.
They do, huh?
You gotta cross your arms and lean back against the wall and stare at people.
Notice they're all on the same base of posture.
There you go, there you go. Well, I just, again, want to thank you guys for your work. I think we have the right people on the job, and we're going to come out with a really good product. I've been concerned about graduation requirements for a while. I love the thoughts, so I'm just going to throw out a few thoughts, and I have a question about rigor. I love competency-based education. In fact, one of the things we told redesigned schools was if you have a kid who's learned, developed some competencies at 4H, you can go ahead and count them. They could do that today. I don't think a lot of schools recognize that, but growing those opportunities to develop competencies and get credit for them outside the walls of the school, I think is going to be critical to moving forward. And the fact that colleges now are moving toward basing entrance on grades, and we might make the grades go away, doesn't really bother me a bit, because they didn't ask us when they did that, and we have to do what we think is best for kids. So go wherever you need to go on that. The add or subtract, I did a lot of research when we were working on computer science of what was going on across the country, and when I saw that Massachusetts, which classically gets some of the best ratings in education, had like no requirements, like it's all left up to the local districts, kind of relieved some of the heartburn I had about taking some things away. But I hope you look at, because we've talked about, of course, computer science, and I've noticed a lot of states are moving more toward, not necessarily a computer science requirement, but some kind of CTE component which may fit in with the value-added, you know, thing. So you, I know you guys already figured out you're working cross paths on a lot of issues. But the thing about rigor, the K-BOR did away with the list of classes you would have to take to go to college, and they did away with the ACT for KU, and the others will follow. And so they have really removed the rigor requirement to get into college. And when I talked to people, more than one at K-BOR about that, they said, well, you guys are going to have to be the ones that hold the line on rigor. guys are going to have to be the ones that hold the line on rigor. You know, and it's like, okay. I mean, I was really looking forward until all that happened, of really making high school flexible, wherever you wanted to go. And now it's like we've got to prepare everybody to go to college because you don't know who needed all those college classes. So I don't know how we manage that to, because, for example, if you got rid of some of the science or math requirements that we have, we are, you have less incentive for people to even go into that field to teach high school math or science. And we already have, as Dr. Schrock will tell you, probably one of the worst-prepared group of science teachers, not that they all don't love it, but you know, they're, a lot of them have, are teaching science without having the classes they really needed. And if you remove those requirements, then that, you see what I see, it's kind of a slippery slope. So how do you guys plan to address the, the issue of keeping the rigor in science in high, or not science, but rigor in all studies in high school? Knowing that we really need, how do we manage the flexibility with the rigor?
Great discussion point in the next several months.
Okay.
We don't have an answer.
I don't either. If I did, I'd, I'd just had another discussion.
No, I don't want to, I don't want to come up here and babble about something that we, we haven't really discussed yet.
Yeah.
You know, other than the fact that we've been challenged about graduation requirements being, you know, reduced in, in terms of rigor. You know, you're just going to make, like competency is just an easy way to get out of a class, you know, or a project-based program, or, you know. So we're not here to, to really answer that question now. Maybe some of them have an answer that I don't know, but we haven't really discussed it as a task force or as subcommittees. That's coming. We, the subcommittees will make their reports, you know, on the twentieth of January, you know, to the whole task force. Now it'll be our first in-person, as was mentioned in the presentation. And then the task force takes the issues and the recommendations and the, the findings of the subcommittees, and they start to bring it together to have a product that will come back to the board in May.
And maybe...
And the rigor would have to be part of that discussion.
Yeah.
So thank you.
It may just get back to what Jim said, the IPS is the key, a rigorous IPS. And I know that there are a lot of schools out there who are checking that box, but it's not a very rigorous plan of study in place, so, I don't know.
This might be one of those levers to move it right along.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Certainly, thank you. Melanie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim, you asked for an easy question. I'll give you an easy question. If, if I am sitting out there in YouTube land and I'm a student, or a parent, or a teacher, or a principal, and I'm hearing this maybe for the first time, and I'm going, ooh, I have, I have ideas and thoughts, how do I get in touch with somebody on the task force? How, how do I get my voice heard?
One of the things that we're looking forward to, and I'll be talking to the staff here at KSDE, is to have a website that they could go to, places they could, you know, and we don't have that right now. You know, regrettably, these guys have full-time jobs, you know, and yes, that's going to be part of our stakeholder outreach program. So that's a great question. We've, because some people just can't get in and tell us, you know, but you'd be amazed at how many people have already reached out. I don't know about you guys, but, you know, they got all the answers, some of them, and I mean all the answers. And others just have questions, others have, have you thought of this, or suggestions, you know? All of the information that we receive from the constituents and the citizens of Kansas, you know, whether individual citizens or from organizations, or from business and, and industry, are valued and appreciated.
Thank you. I want to highlight that as, as a member of the task force, there was a survey that went out and was answered by several existing and, and previous students who have graduated. And so it was interesting to have their input and feedback on what the process was like for them. So I just think it's important that we keep that student voice right there at the top of the list.
Interesting results.
Indeed, they were, yes.
You beat me to the punch. That's what I was just getting ready to say, is that we did send out a survey, and we had almost, I believe around two hundred current students and former students that did respond to that. We're also working on all sorts of ways that stakeholders can participate, whether it's electronically, whether it's in person, where we have similar situations like this, but try to make it available to all stakeholders so there is an excuse for if you want to give feedback, fill my inbox up. Maybe I shouldn't have said that out loud, but, you know, I think it'll be good because all feedback is valuable from stakeholders, so.
Should be pointed at that on ksd.org under the board, Jim's home number is on the list.
Thank you for telling us.
And, and I'll be glad to pass it on if anybody... Jean.
I just had somewhat of a comment or a question. In, in establishing a certain number of credits that are required, how do we view, and maybe this isn't determined yet, accomplishments under mastery or competency, or, or the value-added piece? Would they be considered to meet a credit, or are we still in the discussion phase on that? And if so, of that twenty-one, is there a certain number where there's flexibility and, and those other things could be inserted for credit there? Or I, I think that's probably still under discussion, but I'm just wondering.
It definitely is still under discussion. The general concept is, like, for example, looking at ELA or math, if they've met a mastery, depending on their individual plan of study, it's not for everyone. I go back to the, the question or concern about rigor. The, the awesome part of this conversation that we're having about the, the credits and individual plan of study and the flexibility is that not only, like, it depends on what lens or perspective you're looking at. It may look like we're lessening or making it easier for certain kids. That's not necessarily true. It depends on their particular path. Dr. Watson's done two different tours, has kind of told us, I don't mean to mess up your statistics, but approximately, let's say forty percent are in that four-year college track. So we really need to be looking at other kids and their tracks and what they need. The exciting part about this is those four-year group of kids, we can increase the rigor. Maybe we need to look at their individual plan of study includes four years of science or four years of math, and making sure they're more prepared. Where someone who's doing a two-year technical program is halfway through that by the end of their senior year, and they have a different option. So for those kids, maybe getting a, a year of their English credit because they've shown mastery allows them to go ahead and start those career and tech ed opportunities or their work-based opportunities. So it's, that's kind of where we are. We don't have definite answers, but does that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you so much. I, I just would like to make sure that our goal is for that four-year college student as well as the one that's going directly to work, or the one that's going for vocational training, that there, there's a path and, and a, a way for all of them to get the, the credits they need in high school.
Yes, it will just be heavily related, like Ms. Porter mentioned, we just have to have that professional development, that support system to make sure all districts are prepared to understand that IPS and really look at each individual child. That's what's so exciting. We are no longer just having this one-track mindset for just a certain type of student. It allows us to have that flexibility depending on that student's post-secondary plan.
I have a vision, and I was a musician, which means I think critically, I mean, think creatively and impractically. And it is predicated on a rigorous individual plan of study. But if we're going to have an individual, and, and this is not going to happen, but this is my vision. We have rigorous individual plans of study based on the need of each individual student. The question, and I don't expect an answer, why then don't we have individual graduation requirements based on the individual plan of study? That's my vision. It's not going to happen, but, but if we're going to meet the need of each student, I think that's something that could happen. And I, I apologize because we're a little earlier than anticipated, but I don't see any other questions.
Again, the last, well, the last thing I'm going to say is, this is a, a, a work in progress. Please don't take anything that we said today and it's going to happen. You know, well, we got a report from the task force on graduation, and they're going to do this, this, and this. No. We are just gathering information, looking at potential opportunities. We come together in January, and that's where we really start the work of the task force. There are many things that, that we haven't talked about that we've done and looked at, you know, and there's going to be many more. And then the second part is what Jim Porter said, we need to contact and be in contact, excuse me, and get feedback from across our state, you know, in all categories to move forward. You know, so with that, I again want to thank our chairs that are here, the leadership team, and the board members who have worked with us, and, and the entire task force, which is about forty-two people. You know, I haven't met most of them. I didn't meet these principals until just about a month and a half ago, you know, for the first time. All our meetings have been on Zoom, and tomorrow we'll be on Zoom. And if you want a data point about the success of this task force, I would say one of the data points is the task force keeps coming back. You know, now, I, I, I've already had two messages in the last several days about individuals who are on the task force who have said, I'm sorry, but I can't be there, there's a school issue, or some issues come up, but almost always they do that. We never take attendance, but we always know who's there. You know, and we have a, we, we, a high participation rate, and that's indicative of their commitment to it. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you, and thank you for the opportunity to allow us to look at graduation requirements. You know, about every hundred years we do this, so, you know, this is going to be the hundred-year one, you know. I'd like again to express my thanks to the, to the chairs that are here, as well as to all the task force members, and all the people who have participated with us. And I do really want to make note, you know, we've talked to NASB, we've talked to state commissioners, we've talked to USA and, and KSB and, you know, all of these different organizations, and it's, it's been a great discussion, really fulfilling. So thank you for this opportunity.
What I would ask of you is to consider those fourteen percent that didn't graduate and what those barriers are, and for us to do everything we can to assure rigor in the individual plan of study process. That's this side of the table that's responsible for that, so.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to suggest, well, first I'd like to make a statement. This is the first time we've looked at graduation, I'm the longest-serving board member since I was first on the board, when we added the arts as a graduation requirement. I would like to suggest that when this committee finishes all their work, you might set up a timer, you know, set every five years or something, we will revisit this. I mean, I don't, I think this is ridiculous that we waited this long. And so I think this is something that's so important, and education changes all the time, and you can't tell me it hasn't changed that much since we added the arts. So that's what I would like to suggest. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing you again.
In June.
And do you have the, do you have the motion for executive session?
Yeah, but let's, we won't even take a break. Just do it. Do it for ten minutes, it's going to take some while to get people out.